We'll call the meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Wasika School Board. It's Thursday, July 13th, 2024, 5:30 PM. And we're in the central building, second floor conference room. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands while our nation armoured. And this is all liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes? Hearing none. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Recognition of visitors, not seeing any tonight. We'll move on to payment of claims. Adita?
I review the claim for the month of May and recommend the action of payment of those claims. Account payable $1,087,657.20. April dental, $12,768.04. May dental, $19,802.55.
Thank you.
Second. Okay. Motion and a second to approve payment of claims. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Moving right along here, information items. Strategic plan.
Good evening.
Dr. Hartspith.
Yeah, thank you. My plan will be relatively brief this evening as we want to get to the excitement of this evening with the preliminary budget with Mr. Moline here. But a couple of things from the strategic plan for going as we head into the summer, thinking about some important work we've got going on the next few months. Obviously, working hard on staffing for the fall. We are essentially hired for the fall with our teaching licensed teaching positions for all but a few special education positions that we're continuing to hire for. And some working through some things with those, but we have good candidates. We've had, we've had success hiring thus far. Planning the budget for the next fiscal year has been a large portion of our last few weeks. Getting into the summertime here, looking at how we can continue to stay within our means and our operating costs and find areas where we can continue to be more efficient. And going forward, we've done a nice job that you'll hear from that from Mr. Moline here in a moment about the budget planning. We're looking forward to presenting once again a fairly very balanced budget for the next fiscal year, which is just a testament to the work of all of our staff and how they do and operating and doing what they said they would do when it comes to the budget. As far as community engagement for the summertime, for our strategic direction on that, focusing a lot on conversations and planning in the summer. You know, talking with community members about what they've seen, what they're seeing in the district, what activities are exciting to them, whether it's our community opportunities or our facility engagement we're having. So trying to be out and about and welcome to be out in buildings. And there's a lot happening in our buildings. So if you can get to the buildings here in the summertime, you won't find them empty. So kind of getting on going that way. Also thinking about this, it's still a couple of months away, but for board members, thinking about the community engagement, about a board election coming up this fall. And so working with, with our Wasika County partners as well as, as Amy in our office getting prepared for that because that'll be coming up here in August as we start filing for, for election here in the fall. For our strategic direction of learning for all, that's really where a lot of our focus is going right now in the summertime. Summer programming at Hartley and, and intermediate school are underway. Students coming several days a week to support their learning that they had during the school year and prepare for next fall. Thank you for all the staff who are here and supporting students. They started right after, soon as they were out, they started back in with some of those kids getting rolling. So that's positive. Extended school year for special education will begin the last week of this month and head into, into July as well. A lot of professional development happening for staff during the summer, particularly quite a bit of curriculum mapping and people working on planning what their scope and sequence of their next year looks like, as well as the Read Act, doing some literacy training happening a lot during the summer. And staff has been working hard, hard with that. A particular focus also, we're doing some professional development with our leadership team. The book we discussed at our lack as our last work session, our leadership team will be reading that this summer together and talking about how, how do we use that to impact ourselves as administrators, to be able to make sure we're supporting all of our students and families? And making sure that we come down to the perspective of, of care and curiosity and welcoming to everybody. So that'll be positive. Our team will also be heading down to the HumanX conference here the last week of June for a two-day conference down in Omaha. And that'll be myself and several of our directors and a couple of our principals. We'll be having a two-day conference down there and some leadership training. There was something I went to last year individually out in Michigan and hadn't been to it before. I've been a partner with HumanX, several of you have met them for a number of years. Hadn't been to their summer summit, not quite sure what the value was after going last year. It was definitely confirmed for me that more should hear that story. And so we're going to bring our leadership team out there and we'll come back and, and it'll be some good team building for us and good direction setting for us, but also thinking about going forward. And then finally, just annually, we want to review our strategic plan and what our operational plan looks like. And you know, we did some of that with the vision card work as we wrapped up my goals as we'll talk about in a few, in a few moments here about the evaluation of your superintendent. But we're also planning for July to do a full operational plan review as a DLT and go into our next proposed vision cards for the next school year, which you'll see as a board there and approve in August and September. So lots happening in the summer for us, but a lot of planning and visioning from a district perspective is a lot of our work and administratively for the summertime. That's all I had tonight so we can, we can get to the show.
Okay, thank you. Move, move along to Matt and...
Sure. Well, good evening, everyone. Yeah, here tonight to talk about the fiscal year '25 preliminary budget. I'm going to open up the summary here. Gotcha. All right, yeah. Second page, if you would please. So this is also attached as that summary of fund balance there or preliminary fund balances. But this is basically taking us from what we presume to be our ending balance of fiscal year '24 when we did our revised budget is the first column. And then revenue and expenses that we are foreseeing at the moment. And if those did hold true, what we would end up with our fund balance. And you can see all these various rows are either restricted, assigned, or unassigned. Fund balance is there for the general fund. But the most important one is the ones with kind of the highlights. And that is our unassigned or kind of our savings account.
Sorry, hang on. Could you blow that up for those who don't have it in their pack? If you don't have it, make that larger.
Down at the bottom, hit the plus.
There we go.
Yeah.
There we go.
Make that a little bit easier.
Sounds good. So yeah, the bottom, the second bottom line there is our unassigned. So those are any dollars that the state hasn't told us what we have to do with them. Or in the case of assigned, other parties have told us what to do. So that is the line that we'd like to use our fund balance policy to kind of monitor. And that is right now sitting at about 22%. So actually almost 23% with rounding. So right, right in the, right in the range, we'd like to see that is $105,000 increase from the previous balance or 83 and a half days. When I say that, that would mean if everybody stopped paying us, we get no other dollars, we would make it 83 days before we run out. So at our current pace. So about, you know, a quarter of the year. Other than that, all these other restricted, some of them you will see, we are spending those down. That's kind of the plan. Some of those have grown over the years with our COVID dollars, but now we're back to normal operations and getting back into spending those. So obviously we have to do that strategically. But this, this has allowed us to kind of use some of those funds to do some of the things we want to do here. Before I go on to the other funds, any questions?
Could you just point, talk a little bit about basic skills and a little bit about LTFM and why we're hoping to build those balances a little bit?
Sure. So basic skills, which is the line about six from the bottom of that restricted section. That is also known as compensatory from time to time. So you can see that our revenue is about 1.7 million. Now, historically, we've only gotten about 750,000 of that. But with some of the things they're doing up at the legislature, that formula's changed. So we are seeing a rather generous increase in that area. And using those funds now to pay for some of the stuff that used to get paid with COVID, plus our fund balance that we were allowed to grow over the time we were using our Esser funds, that's helping our operations. And obviously when we're spending out of basic skills, it's not affecting our unassigned. And there is a, a lot you can do with basic skills staffing wise, that a lot of that 1.8 million dollars is just staff and, and benefits and those kinds of things. And it's basically trying to get kids caught up to grade level or help our youngest learners make sure they're starting off on a good foot.
So some of our Title I and our intervention teachers and that kind of stuff.
Right, yeah. Of course, Title I is a different thing, but you can in unison, kind of use some of those dollars. So, but yeah, a lot of remedial math, remedial reading, those types of staff would be in basic skills if they're not in one of those other programs. So then LTFM, which is the second lineup from the bottom of that restricted cluster, that is also one that we are not utilizing our full allotment this year to save up kind of for future projects. Of course, we're doing a couple of things this year. As you can see, we have about 470,000 budgeted there in the expenditure line, but with the aid we're getting plus the balance we're starting with, we are going to grow that by about 100,000 or so. And like I said, that can sit there and grow as we get ready to do some larger things. And that will just be one of our mechanisms for funding those programs or projects.
When we do the next 10-year LTFM plan, as the facility committee finishes that and we bring that into July, there'll be some guidance going on with there right now. But until we make some, some potentially larger facility decisions, we want to make sure we are building that balance such that we can handle the roofs in '28 and we can handle those things coming up. So we're prepared.
Right.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
When you look line, what is it? The gifted and talented, why there is such a big difference between revenue and expenditures?
Sure. Yeah, I think also just a planned spend down of some of that existing fund balance. What, also one of the areas that had benefited from the Esser funds and being able to do some things. So using those, you know, obviously we're still going to be sitting at 50,000 or so at the end if the year holds true. So like I said, one of the, one of the kind of the tasks I had with this budget is to start spending some of these restricteds down because they are set aside for specific purposes. We can't do anything else with them. So we might as well use them the best we can with, while still maintaining, you know, kind of our fiscal responsibilities and not going crazy one year so we have nothing the next year. But yeah.
For the assigned, you know, like the assigned donations in program 1821, I was just curious, you know, again, like for the assigned donations, you know, revenue 7,000 and expenditures, expenditures 33. Just, I just want to understand how this works.
Yeah, no, that's a good question. So some of that is being conservative because we have programs that have continued continually donated some various thing or dollars for various things. And I, I think the expenditures are going to happen, but you know, there's, these people aren't guaranteed to fund those programs. So just trying to, you know, show a little bit of that. Also, some of it might be timing if, you know, some of they had given previously or there. So, but I, I think a lot of that was...
The revenue might have come in a different year.
Yeah. And we have a large, large spreadsheet that tracks all the donations we get, so...
And one thing to, to note, I was looking at the preliminary '23, '24 budget. So last June, we had 33, 983, and that expenditures there for that line as well. So that's kind of that predicted norm of what donations potentially could fund year over year.
Right.
So... Do you have that, was the revenue then, was it the same?
It was, well, there was no budgeted revenue in last year's.
Okay.
It was budgeted as a zero revenue, but $33 in expenditures as part of the, the fund balance at the time had, was 38,000. So it was a potential fund spend down of the fund balance. So as the revenues come in, we'll be able to do some of those things or we won't. Kind of how that goes.
And do it, the estimated was supposed to be 4,000 at the end of the year, but we're at 11,000, so...
Correct.
Means the net result was not quite...
Because probably that 7,000 of revenue came in. So the expectation for next year is potentially 7,000.
Yeah.
Matt, can you explain one more time? I know you've explained this before, but the difference between restricted and assigned funds?
Sure. So restricted is the state is telling us, when we give you this dollar, it has to go in this bucket. So when we get our big state aid payment, and they do that every 15 days, they also send with it a sheet. And the sheet just basically tells me, here's where to deposit all these dollars. A lot of them will go into just the unassigned, you know, state aid, but you'll get hit, you know, here's some basic skills, here's some operating capital. It goes down the list. Some of those will have 20 different codes on them. And so that's, once we get those dollars and we code them appropriately, that's when it goes into those restricted fund balances and we have to spend them in the way that the state says we have to, or it'll just sit there and grow as a fund balance. Assigned is like with student activities or donations, that those are outside, kind of we've set our own restriction. It's not quite as restricting important, you know, not the best choice of word, but as a restricted, but it's still something we like to set aside and kind of track separately. So...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have any of, any of the lines there on the screen? Do you have any, like, are you worried about any projected fund balance on any of those lines or something that's worrying you or...
No, not really. I don't think anything stands out. I mean, there's certainly ones we're watching. Obviously, the, the top line there was pointed out in the finance committee, obviously the student activities are doing a little bit of a spend down right now, but we're obviously watching that one because that one can't go negative.
Yeah, that was, we, we were budgeted 148,000 in expenses last year. So that's what, with $87,000 of revenue.
Right.
Projected. So it's a very similar projection to last year's budget.
Sure. Yeah. And that, there are some new ones up there, which were projected just to kind of spend it as soon as we get it. But just making sure we get all those accounted for is kind of, you know, as a legislature likes to spit out these new programs every once in a while, just making sure we capture those. Because the, the third one down, the literary incentive aid, they've changed that. We've always gotten that money, but it never had it restricted before. So now maybe they thought districts statewide weren't doing what they were supposed to be doing. So now here comes a restriction and they're going to do that. We did get a little bit more revenue because of it, but now it's limited. The other one, the school library aid, which is, let's see, just below basic skills, that's a new one as well, that we can basically code our media specialists there. So that one, that one will probably be spent every year. And then there was a couple of new programs, but sometimes they make you track dollars, but they don't restrict them. Like we had student support personnel aid is a new one this year, but that's not set aside as a restricted right now. But we're still supposed to obviously do what, what we're supposed to do as far as getting a social worker or a guidance counselor or any of that. But... All right, if there's no other questions, we'll go to the next page. So this is getting a little smaller, I apologize, but maybe one more zoom in will help this one. Or we can scroll. So this is our other funds. Obviously, we spend a lot of time in the general fund because it's our main kind of focus. We do most of our activities there. But these other ones are equally important to how we function overall. Food service, this is one where we're, we're trying to kind of figure out the best path forward. Right now, we have a fund balance that is in excess of what the state would like it to be. And actually, I don't think it's the state, it's the feds would like it to be. So trying to find out the best way to do that, whether it's more equipment or food quality, anything like that. You know, we're kind of going through that process. But right now, the one line, I know they're broken out, but those are actually together. I just, we like to show summer foods on this one separately. But the, the new delivery vehicle is in there, that's why that's driving the negative. The summer food program itself is not actually losing that much money over the summer, just to clarify. But in total, we still have about 550,000 there on a 1.5 million dollar budget. So they like to see you under three months of expenses. So we would have to, you know, spend a little bit down. Any questions on food service? Obviously, this was the first year of the, the new free for all. So some of the changes there, we won't even see the full picture till we get to the end of '24 when the audit is issued. But I think we captured decently about what was happening.
Would you say it's fair that other districts are kind of seeing the same number?
Right.
And is there other ideas that they are running out there?
I mean, that, it's, it's almost like they ask you to do it and then they cut your legs off every time you come up with an idea because there's a lot you can't do. But like, you can't give more food out in, in a meal because the feds regulate portion sizes and all that. You can do second meals as like a lower cost. You can try to push out more fresh fruit or that kind of thing. But yeah, other than that, it's pretty much, you know, do you need a new oven? Well, great, you can buy the oven, but if you have to modify your electricity or modify the building in any way, well, that has to come out of the general fund. So there's a lot of those kind of catch 22s.
So you can't like remodel a kitchen space.
No, the legislative push right now from school districts is to make, create more flexibility with your food service.
Yeah, so it'd be good to stay within the walls.
Yeah, right. Because they did add, I know it sounds minimal, but it was a good, it was a step in the right direction. They added, you could buy lunch tables now with your food service.
Oh, that's nice.
You couldn't, you couldn't buy that before with that. But they still have, so for example, we need to do a ceiling in the kitchen, your food service fund still can't, can't pay for that right now.
They talked about ceilingless counters and stuff like that. Could that be...
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Or like all the chairs that are stored next to the auditorium that are all beat up that used in the lunchroom at times could fit in that.
Yeah, we can make those work.
Yeah.
Yeah. So districts are having to be more creative, but we're also asking the legislature to give us some more flexibility with that. Because otherwise, there's not a lot in the current plan, what you can do.
Right. And it's hard because the food nutrition program is a federal one, so it's not just the state. They're kind of the little brother trying to say, hey, big brother, will you let me do this? And yeah, so moving on, community ed, obviously another kind of vital program of what we do here. Not a lot really to point out here. Obviously, that school readiness line, right now, we're just running that, whatever we take in, we're spending. So that, that'll continue until we get more funding in that area, but no changes are coming. That is our preschool line there. So other than that, the overall fund there, you can see we've got about a 20,000 to the good in the overall fund balance. So keep, you know, we'll just try to keep maintaining that area as we go. And this does not have anything with the, any changes to programming at that point in there. So fund six is our little bit of bond funds we have left over. Anytime something comes up with indoor air quality, we're trying to use those funds, but we, we're just, you know, a lot of those don't come up as often as, or we have other fundings for them. So it's, but yeah. So that one should be pretty much gone by the end of this year, but we probably said that last year too. So we'll just keep spending it as we go. Debt service, that is just continuing to do what debt service is supposed to do. We have to levy 100 or 105% of our, of our bond payments every year. So that is supposed to grow that fund balance, but eventually it will get returned as the debt gets paid off, then it enters into what's known as the debt excess formula in our levy. So that'll cause a reduction in future years. So and then the other, we have the trust fund, which is our scholarships that are held under a trust agreement. So with our current interest rates and everything, we should be able to give out almost $20,000 of scholarships in '25 unless the interest rates really drop, but that's what I have right now. And then the custodial funds, those are not quite as restricted as the trust documents, but a lot of those scholarships are also money we get through the foundation and other sources that we give out as well. So that top line there, almost 78,000 we give out every year. So coupled that with the 20, we're almost 100,000. And then some of those other youth scholarships as well. And then the collaborative for families is the program we run with the county that is doing the family service coordinator. So the, we just hold those dollars where the fiscal host, but that isn't Wasika's money. And anything in fund 18 is not technically our money. That's why it's called a custodial fund. We just, we get to hold on to it basically is the setup there. And then lastly, the, the bottom line is our debt service fund, which is pretty much holding steady there, slight gain, but we did not raise rates this year. So obviously that seemed to be a good...
Dental.
Oh, dental, did I say health or, sorry what I said?
Dental.
Dental, yes. Our dental fund is holding strong there. So that, I think I got a couple graphs to go over and then we'll be moving along. So just kind of giving a picture, you might have to zoom out now a couple. Just a picture of kind of where you can see. So when we look at the totality of that budget, we have about 33 and a half million dollars across all funds and just the breakdown of them. So the general fund's about 80, 82, 81% of that. And then the rest, you can see where they lie. So just obviously, like I said before, the general fund's the main focus, kind of the main, main driver of all of our activity. You can scroll to the next slide. So if we're looking at the general fund, then breaking that 81% down, where does it come or how does it get spent? So 73% that goes out as salary or benefits to our staff. And then you can see the other percentages there, but obviously so a large portion is staff or obviously a staff-driven business here or operation. So you can go to the next slide. So then revenue, once again, it kind of holds true. If we have also 33 and a half million dollars of revenue, we're projecting that 81 and a half percent of it again is going into the general fund. So then the next slide. And then breaking down that 81%, 80% of that is coming from the state, another 10 or so from our levy or just under 10. And then the rest is either from the fed or local, which is like our sports fees and gate receipts and all those other miscellaneous items.
You'll notice the federal's a little lower this year because we don't have the Esser money.
Right.
Don't have the percentage, I should say, is what that is. Last year, that percentage was a little higher for federal because of those monies were part of it.
Right. Yeah, two years ago would have been higher too. That was the big year with Esser III. So but this should be the new normal as far as our federal dollars. Because right now, this budget has only about 90,000 of COVID dollars in it. So this is a, just kind of showing our fund balance policy here. So you can see we have the history going back to 2010. And then the ones with the asterisks are still estimated. Obviously, '24 hasn't concluded yet and '25 is the one we're talking about today. But with those, we're kind of getting back more in the middle of those two red lines than we had been in 2023. So one more slide here. Oh, sorry. This is just an illustration. I know, just to kind of, this, once this document gets approved today, if, if it does, I'll have that uploaded and this is where people can find it. And it is actually, it's about a 35-page document that I have prepared to go with it. So that'll be uploaded once, once it gets approved. So all right. Couple other things for me today before I let you go. Just those financial reports, so the... Um, just those financial reports, so the expenditure graphs in comparison and the now, as promised, revenue graph in comparison are on there. Um, any questions on those if you reviewed them?
Yeah, I had a question.
Sure.
And I'm sure, I'm sure it's an obvious answer, but so our expenditures are at about seventy eight percent of our budget.
Right.
Right now, and then the revenues are like ninety three percent. Is it just because we've received more dollars than we've had to pay out yet?
Revenue is kind of a timing thing. As I said, the state kind of decides when they want to pay you sometimes. You know, they can meter out their payments or they can front load you, um, whatever's going on there. So, um, but uh, no, that is a good question. And, and just to be aware with the way our teachers run, they're only, they're still getting paid all the way out through September. So they're only two thirds, uh, I guess compensated at this point.
That makes sense.
So, yeah.
Is it pretty typical this kind, this time of year to see more of our revenues having been collected versus us spending all of our expenditure?
Yeah, I mean, it's definitely this percentage of expenditures, as you can see on there, is pretty much been where we've been.
Right.
Um, so it's just, um, yeah, sometimes, like I said, and we just got the levy in May too. Um, so that's part of the reason why our revenue is higher. Um, but yeah.
Okay.
I would anticipate our expenditures would grow, but our revenue, you know, is probably, we've kind of gotten what we're going to get, uh, on some of those bigger items at this point. So, but we'll continue to monitor it. And, uh, yeah, those are good questions. And then enrollment, uh, just kind of finished out the year there. Um, got the June numbers up. Um, as you can see, we're down a couple more kids than May, but not, uh, too many. But, uh, once again, any more questions on that one? If not, that's all I had for this evening, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
Yes.
Uh, moving along to committee and board member reports. Uh, Grant, would you like to start us off, please?
Sure. Uh, I had a couple committees. The professional growth and development, uh, was at the end of the school year. Um, talked about prior days, also spent some time planning for what they want to do for next year. Um, this year was kind of broken up because of, there's a lot of read act training and cores training, which is a lot of things they were doing. So though that will still continue to happen through next year, but they're also trying to determine how do they still do the best growth for people. There's also some summer opportunities that I think maybe we've seen some emails on. Uh, so they're talking about some of those opportunities for this staff to go see too. I also had a deck committee meeting that, uh, went through how we're meeting some of the district goals. Uh, talked about some of the spring assessments, um, some potential of what graduation rates might look like, but that's not officially released yet. And, uh, some more about the literacy training we had that had been happening. Finance committee was just today, which we got Matt's same presentation, the longer version. I think we can say we grilled him pretty good on it and asked him lots of questions. So, um, I feel good about that and that's what I had.
Okay, thank you, Julie.
All right, well, I have the deck committee meeting also, but you covered that. And then we've had two facility meetings. Um, one, we met with Site Logic to see what services they could give the district, particularly looking if, if we wanted an outside entity to come in and do like a larger facility survey, um, to help prioritize our needs, but also looking at different ways that we could fund projects if we needed to fund projects. So that was an interesting meeting. Um, and then our second meeting was just to kind of cover, um, what our normal may meeting would have been. Um, and we discussed our current L T F M plan, um, and possibly, um, relooking at those numbers and helping us, to help us reassess projects priorities. And so Eric and Jeff Jensen are going to see if they can maybe do that in-house. If not, we definitely have sources we could turn to if, if we need to. Um, and we also reviewed childcare facility prospects, um, and the many, many steps involved to get this going. Um, but we're still looking at, um, making this happen for the district. It just takes time, so.
Thank you, Adita.
I had only superintendent evaluation committee and we will talk about it in our action items.
Okay, all right.
It went very well.
All right, Darren.
Uh, Julie covered the facilities, um, pretty much basic there. We, we just ongoing conversation the last few meetings. So I'm just keep pulling, compiling a lot of information before we, you know, put anything out there, I think. And then policies, just, uh, no changes, but just a review and a handful of policies.
All right, good, thank you, Charlie.
I think they covered everyone, policy and, and facilities, so.
All right, Dan, Alyssa.
I had finance and superintendent eval and covered finance and we'll cover superintendent eval in just a minute.
Okay, sounds good, all right. Um, Colin.
Um, so football has started, which is where Alan is. That's why he couldn't make it. Um, but they have, um, camp in Duluth on Sunday. And then marching man has also started. And after our three days of practice this week, we have our first parade of the season tomorrow. So that's exciting.
Is that on Lake Crystal?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think that we caught on really, really quickly this year. I'm excited for it. Um, and then there's the middle school play, the Princess and the Pea, Friday at seven and then Saturday at two. Yeah, that's all about, I'll go for this one.
That's next Friday, Saturday.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Do you want to mention our new high school board rep? The new?
Yeah, well, Alan Kapeski will be joining us here for the next year. Uh, he'll be our junior rep, right?
Hopefully two years he joins.
Well, correct, yes, all right, yes. But, but yeah, he'll be, he'll be joining us here, uh, um, replacing big shoes with Addy, but I'm sure he's up to it and looking forward to having him part of our conversation. One of the things we, we value our student board members and their input. And as we continue to find more ways to include them in our work, I'm looking forward to taking kind of what Addy and Colin had kind of thought of the next year and this last year and continuing that going forward. So looking forward to our, our new member.
Okay, um, moving on then to recognitions, positive or feedback. Grant, you want to start us off again, please?
Sure, I was, uh, in the past few weeks, I've been to and from the schools doing various things and there's a lot of community ed things happening. So I want to recognize all the work that Nikki and all the community ed staff, the, the coaches, the people who put on the programs. There's a, I mean, it's almost like it's as busy as school year, not quite. But there's a lot of stuff happening with sports activities and, uh, the band's been doing things. But so thanks to community ed and keeping kids busy for the summer. I think the kids enjoy that. It helps the community, it's very good.
Okay, Julie?
Oh, I have two things. Um, one, I had a chance to catch up with Kelly Lentz recently from Lentz Bus Company. And so I just want to recognize our bus companies who don't take the summer off. Um, they're still very busy, um, providing service to the district. So getting kids to and from summer school, but also field trips and whatever else is needed and also just getting ready for the fall. So she's, they seem very busy still, so. Um, and then I want to thank, um, send a thank you to crossing guards, Tim Condon and Leslie Wells, who officially retired from their duties after decades of service. I think I saw one was thirty two years and one was twenty five years. Um, and they, so they were recently recognized at a city council meeting, but I also wanted to recognize them and thank them for, for providing a very valuable service to the district and the community, so.
I've known Les for many, many years and to see him standing out on the east side of the high school in the middle of winter with the wind blowing and the snow blowing and ice and slippery conditions and he's all bundled up and he really took that job very seriously. So thank you to both those two individuals. Okay, Adita.
Just would like to say thank you to office staff who supported our kids all year and they are still there, I think. They don't take break and staff and administration for all year, you know, supporting our kids and make it work for them.
Okay, thank you, Darren.
Uh, yeah, I think a lot of it's covered. There's, you know, Grant's covered, there's a lot of sports activities and just other, other activities besides sports going on for these kids. And it takes a lot to organize all that, so it's appreciated. Um, and then just putting our buildings back together and maintaining while everybody's out and getting them freshened up for the start of this next school year. It takes a, takes a crew of people to do that and to show up when everybody else seems to be having fun on the summer months, right? So, well, thank you.
Charlie.
Well, I talked just about a little about graduation. Graduation is still a wonderful event. It's just fun to see all the people there and the kids excited to be done. And then there's a little anticipation about what's coming next, but it was always fun to see that. And I want to really reach out to all the, the staff and the students. I had the opportunity to be a step grandfather this year to a foreign exchange student. And, and it's been an interesting year having her here and, uh, Mr. Nelson and Mrs. Nelson, they, they took really good care of her. I want to thank them for that. And, and then his, I got, I got to know that his dad or their dad. So he wrote on Facebook a little things here. He says, after several visits to the USA and many meetings with French people living and working on the site, as well as Americans sharing their daily lives, I'm getting, I'm able to get a clearer view of this unique mindset. So he found, he found that we are, we were very unique here in the U S. And, and he went on, um, he went on. And marrying each other in France, success is often a source of jealousy. Successful people are sometimes criticized and envied. In the U S, success is celebrated and shown as an example. Each success serves as inspiration to others. I sign that anything is possible with hard work and determination. That was the kind of recognition I got from, from him about his, uh, his, seeing his daughter being here. So I was, I want to thank the people, the staff and everybody for the excellent job and the students. I mean, she made, she was able to make lots of friends, you know, and of course she was a very outgoing student. But, but it was, it's been a really a fun year having her here. And I want to thank the people for, for accepting her and doing that, so.
Okay.
Um, Facebook, social media apps, whoever's posting on those, they're doing a great job, um, highlighting all of the community ed activities that are going on this summer. So that's appreciated for those of us who can't get out to everything to see that going on. Um, also in regards to the summer programming, you know, it takes a lot of coaches and a lot of high school volunteers. So, um, that is appreciated to see those students there helping with those little kids, that little kids really look up to them. Yep.
Colin?
Um, with marching man starting, we have, um, been introduced to the new junior high director, Mr. Peterson. So that's been fun. I'm excited to continue working with him.
Okay, thank you. I've got two. Um, I would like to thank and acknowledge Diane Wrestler, who retired from the school district this year. Um, she's been, uh, she's been employed by the district for, I think, thirty some years, maybe even thirty five. Um, she has most recently run the, uh, wage program. So I actually looked up what does wage stand for? And it stands for workforce alliance for the growth in the economy. Um, could you explain just a little bit more about the wage program for us, please?
Sure, it's essentially, it's a transition program for students ages eighteen through twenty one, uh, primarily.
This, it's the pays lab is what wages, isn't it?
Yeah, but that's not what our pro, that's not really what our primary job is.
No, yeah.
I'm talking about, yeah. The wa, wage is an opportunity for students to learn skills, to provide them for students with special needs for the work, work environment. Her primary job is supervising, um, job internships for students with special needs, eighteen to twenty one. So they're prepared to go out into the world.
Okay, well, thank you and thanks to Diane for, um, heading up that program. And then I saw something in the Star Tribune.
Thank you for saying that.
Um, yesterday that, um, I didn't get the chance to read the article, but the title was half of Minnesota school districts have no school nurse. And I thought, half? Because there's like, what, three hundred some school districts in the state of Minnesota? Half of them do not have a school nurse. So I just thought, um, would like to say thank you one more time to Deb Wabshaw, who just retired as our school news nurse. And, um, thanks to Chrissy Wilson for taking that job. Um, I can't remember us never having a school nurse going way, way back to when I was in school, so.
Yeah, just point of clarification there. It's interesting, if you have less than a thousand students, you're not required to.
Okay.
If you have more than a thousand students, you're required to have a licensed school nurse. And so we actually, because we are, um, we, we applied for, uh, an exception because Chrissy was finishing up her licensure program. And so from the time Deb was retired to then now in April, when Chrissy got her license, then we will, uh, we were on that, on that special variance to be able to have a different type of nursing program. But yeah, so that's, that's some of it is that there's not a lot of nurses out there to work with because we're competing with, with, with private industry for salary. And I think our schedule is a lot better, but it still is, it still is a lot, um, it's a lot different to hard and, and they, and they have to be paid by statute. They have to be paid on the teacher contract, which hinders what we can do for salary for those folks. So it's, Chrissy's doing a great job and, um, Hannah, our, our new, new nurse, who we hired this last January, is also doing a great job. And she's on track to become a licensed school nurse as well, so.
So the title of the article was a little misleading then.
Well, the fact is probably true.
Okay.
But it, we have to, but it maybe doesn't, maybe the article clarifies you're not required to if you have less than a thousand students, so.
All right, sounds good. All right, moving on to action items, uh, motion to approve item A.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty four, twenty five preliminary budget.
Second. Okay, motion and a second to approve the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five preliminary budget. Any more discussion?
I'll only note, as I said before, I, for anybody wondering, there's lots of questions. We can, Matt is great at answering anything if anybody has questions. And we kind of grilled them and dug into lots of details and covered a lot of things for, I think, what we should have.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, uh, motion to approve item B.
I'll make a motion to approve the individual Wasika Public Schools contracts as presented. And these are for, um, Linda Hallowpeter and Katie Stalow.
Second.
Okay, motion and second to approve, uh, individual Wasika Public School contracts as presented.
Can I just clarify, uh, Mr. Chair, that so for Linda Hallowpeter, that's the twenty three, twenty four contract we're approving for this current school year? Because then unfortunately, we do know that position is eliminated at the end of this month. Uh, but for Katie Stalow, that is for twenty three to twenty five, so.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye. All right, aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, um, item C. Um, I will make a motion to approve the superintendent evaluation.
Second.
And we have a second and I'm going to make, um, just a few comments about it. Um, Dr. Hudson's had four goals for this past school year. The first one was strategic plan implementation. Second one was community engagement. Third was budget stabilization. And fourth was his doctoral program. And, uh, all seven of us did an evaluation and he received, um, either an effective or highly effective, um, I guess, vote, uh, from all of us. So, so very, very good. Um, just a few maybe comments here. Um, the first one, strategic plan implementation had a lot to do with vision cards. I think we all appreciate the process and want to keep going with it. Um, community engagement, I think we all pretty much agree that that's a ongoing thing that you never get to the end to, but you just keep working at it as, as, as best you can. Um, seem to be doing an excellent job with the budget along with working with Matt. Uh, his doctor, well, he's Dr. Hudson's, so I guess we don't need to say anything more about that. Um, you seem to be very strong in many, many areas, um, overall doing a great job. Thank you for that and we hope it continues. Um, question for you, um, and it was, comes off of our, of our survey here. What can we do as a board to help you do your job well or better?
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you for that question and thank you for all of you taking the time to do the evaluation. I know it takes time and, and energy that you're doing different, uh, different things in your day. But, uh, the feedback that I received from this process is extremely beneficial to how I continue to work and continue to grow as the leader here in Wasika Public Schools. I've been honored to be here now for four school years and we've seen growth out of the pandemic and we're starting to see some progress, um, academically, socially, emotionally. We're starting to see some, some really positive things. So I'm excited to be here and continue to work with you on that. As I think about the next goals going forward, you know, the, the strategic plan implementation, that goal number one, now that's off and running. And we got that, we've got that rolling. So now the next step for that will be now tracking some of that academic growth and how does our plan really for making that next step into achievement for our students? How does that look like? And to your point, uh, Dave, the, the community engagement is just an ongoing conversation. How do we continue to serve our staff, serve our students, serve our families in all areas? all areas of the community and being everywhere at once to the best we all can be. Because, and we're all doing that. So I think that's an ongoing goal, right, of continuing just to push. Because that is one of those things that the Minnesota Education Partnership, our MSU Partnership had our summer institute yesterday. And the speaker was a former superintendent from Wisconsin. And he made a comment about this 30 second interaction could be the thing they talk about 25 years from now. And so as I, I really started reflecting on that a little bit as, as I'm getting into buildings, as I'm talking to kids, as I'm talking to community members. And we're just in such a hurry to get on to the next thing. But is this 30 second conversation something they're going to talk about in 25 years? They didn't feel like they had the time, they, they had my ear, they had full attention. And so that's ongoing goal. But to answer your question, Dave, I think that one of the things that's most exciting about Wasika right now is that the, the nuts and bolts, if you will, were in place. Our budget's looking solid, our strategic plan is prepared, we're ready to move into the next step. But our next steps really are going to be some big decisions when it comes to facility direction, what we're going to do for build, you know, building usage facilities, but also how are we going to maintain our long-term budget? What is the enrollment going to look like? We've got some information coming in the next few years, weeks and then years, of course, to do some, do some things, which means we have some decisions to make, really in the next, you know, one to two years as a school board about where we want to go next as a, as a district. And I think that as school board, the most beneficial thing for me is continued dialogue. I mean, I do, I think I talk with most of you once a week on average, either through email or text or something. And that, that I really appreciate because one thing I need to, I can support you with as superintendent is if I know what's on your mind, what's concerning you, whatever you're thinking about this particular piece, then I can help, I can help support the conversation. Because particularly with those bigger conversations, my job is to sometimes make recommendations, yes, but it's not to necessarily convince any board member of a particular idea. It's to support each of your perspectives and give you the information you, you need to be able to make a better decision. So if I know, or the best decision for you, so if I know, for lack of a better word, what you're thinking about a particular topic, even if it's a quick phone call to say, I know the board meeting is coming up next week, but this, this has really got me wondering about this, can we talk about that? That's really helpful for me. And you, and all of you do that now. So I wouldn't say it's anything we have to start, but it's something to continue, particularly as we get to the more challenging conversations. Because it's, it's nothing that will halt progress faster than a conversation here that some of us didn't know was going to be coming. And then we had to stop, wait till the next meeting to make a decision. We have to consider those things because all of your perspectives are real. So the most, more, more communication is better. I guess that's my point. And right now, I don't feel like I'm lacking any of that. And the, the comments you received, particularly about some of the communication, feels like you're getting the information you need from me, for the most part. And so I'd say continuing that is the most thing I'm looking forward to as we get into some of those tougher things.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Well, we, I believe I made a motion to approve your evaluation. We had a second. Any more discussion, comments? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item D, I guess we need to read a, something here. It's to approve Superintendent Terry Hudson as the identified official with authority effective July 1, 2024. And it goes on to say designation of an identified official with authority for education, identity, access management. The Minnesota Department of Education, MDE, Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board, Pelsby, and the Office of Higher Education, OHE, require annual designation of an identified official with authority for each local education association that uses the education, identity, access management system. This responsibility for us, this is responsible for authorizing, reviewing and recertifying user access for their local education agency in accordance with the state of Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all users, that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will authorize user access to the state of Minnesota education, secure systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties and will revoke that user's access when it is no longer needed to perform, excuse me, their job duties. I, Dave Dunn, recommend the board authorize Superintendent Eric Hudson to act as the identified official with authority for Wasika Public Schools, IS Independent School District 829, effective July 1, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Can you give us a better explanation what this is all about?
So, yeah, yeah. So anything that's a state system for accessing finances, records, data, the education Minnesota, I'm sorry, Minnesota Department of Education, all their online systems. I'm the one that gives everybody authority to have access to their particular pieces. So Matt has access to the finance pieces, Jeff Wagner has access to the special education pieces and every, the principals have access to the discipline reporting system. So all the reports and all the systems that go on all of our systems on Department of Ed as the, as the Iowa, it's my job to manage who gets access to what. That's really what it comes down to. And, and they get notified and they email me because I don't remember them all, like when everybody expires, right? And when it expires in two weeks, can you relook at me at this particular pace? Or if we have people change over, I have to change them. So that's the main part of it is just getting in and making sure the right people have access to the right things. And then if anybody does inaccurately have access or something happens, then the buck is here. The buck stops here, right? That's my job then to make sure that's appropriate.
Okay. So do you put this on your resume too? Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
One comment. On the front of the agenda, it still has July 1, 2024. Later on, it says 20, or 2023, later it says 2024. I just want to make sure that when it gets in the minutes, it says the correct date.
Okay. Very good.
You are, you are correct. Okay.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. No, you're correct. Thank you for that. Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item E.
No motion needed, it's just an acknowledgement.
Oh, excuse me. I didn't see that. Okay. We're going to acknowledge EMC Insurance as insurance carrier for 2024, 2025 school year. Matt, do you want to say anything to that?
No, we just standard renewal. We didn't do any RFP in your biz this year, but yeah.
We have in the previous years.
We have in the previous years and EMC was the best option last year. So we, we didn't feel it was necessary this year. Maybe next year we'll, we'll see what happens again, but.
All right. Thank you. Motion to approve item F.
I'd like a motion to approve the 24-25 school year calendar as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Eric, do you?
I think I would just point out a few, a few highlights. And much, some of this was driven based on some, some family and staff feedback, but you'll notice that Monday, December 23rd is now a part of our winter break. We're not going to be coming to school for one day there before the winter break. We will notice that there's a longer period of break time in April around the Easter holiday. There was not, Good Friday was marked the wrong day, first of all, but then also we took the, the professional day and the non-student day and clumped them together. So I think previous calendar had a 7th, 14th and 8th off, something like that. So we put them together so that families and staff could have a little bit bigger break. And then the other largest highlight probably is that on, in the start of the school year, all students K-12 will begin on Wednesday, September 4th, so that we don't run into that issue of childcare, J's Nest issues there before the student year begins. We'll have, there's always a couple of days throughout the school year where secondary is in session, but elementary isn't, and that's just how it rolls. But we don't have that back-to-back challenge of coming out of the Labor Day holiday with this particular, but the, all the red act training, all our professional days, we feel good about that. Our student contact days remains right where we need to be. And I'm feeling good about, and our staff had a met, a chance to meet with our teacher leaders, and they felt good about this as well. So some adjustments.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? All in favor of the motion to approve next year's school calendar, say aye. Aye. Excuse me. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Motion for item G.
Or motion to approve reviewed policies.
Okay. Do we have?
I'll second that. Policy 505, 510, 510 addition, 511, 512 and 515, that one.
Okay. Thank you. Motion and a second to approve reviewed policies.
Second.
Yeah. Alyssa second.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. We got it.
Better to have two seconds than no seconds. Okay. Motion, motion to approve the reviewed policies. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple of things. Next work session is not until July 11th. Next regular meeting will be the following week, July 18th.